To this, the Wednesday, August 6, 2025, regular monthly meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners. We are glad to see you here this morning. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll please stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to a recognition, and I will call Chief Wells to the podium.
Distinguished Mayor Kahoon and esteemed members of our Board of Commissioners, today I have the honor of recognizing Lieutenant Mark Edwards, a dedicated public servant who has faithfully served our community for 20 years with Nags Head Fire Rescue. His steady leadership, professionalism, and quiet courage have made a lasting impact on both our department and the people of Nags Head. Lieutenant Edwards began his journey in Nags Head Fire Rescue on June 1, 2005. From day one, he committed himself fully to the mission of protecting and serving others. Through hard work and relentless drive to grow personally and professionally, he rose through the ranks to become Fire Lieutenant. Along the way, he's earned the trust and respect of everyone around him. Mark is known not just for his firefighting skills, but for his calm leadership, team-first attitude, and laid-back lifestyle. He's a person you want beside you when things go tough or get tough. He's reliable, focused, and unshakably humble. Beyond the station, Mark is devoted husband and father. He and his wife, the 22-years-Missy, live in Kill Devil Hills and have two daughters, Mackenzie, 20, who attends UNC Chapel Hill, and Abby, 18, who attends UNC Wilmington. When he's not at the firehouse, you'll find Mark out fishing or surfing, two things that fit his laid-back outdoorsy lifestyle perfectly. Surfing especially is his on-brand, if Mark can get. True to form, he's even been credited with several unofficial water rescues while surfing. Just another example of how Mark's always ready to help, even when he's off the clock. When I asked his coworkers to describe him, the message is clear. Mark is a steady ham, a calming presence. He brings balance to the shift. He's easygoing, dependable, and never seeks the spotlight. Though today, we're going to shine a little light on you. Lieutenant Mark Edwards, thank you for your two years of dedicated service. You make us proud every single day. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Appreciate you for this. Thank you.
Twenty-two years. Miss, I'm sorry, 22 years.
And as is our custom for employees with 20 or more years, we're going to take a picture with you, Mark.
Okay.
Thank you. He is always ready to help. I said our posing was a little asymmetrical. He said, "Well, we can fix that." So, thank you, sir. And we are pleased and honored this morning to have Ms. Wumble sitting in for John.
Good morning.
Thank you, and we will put you to work with the public comment, please.
All right, wonderful. Now is the time for a public comment, and if members of the community have anything to provide to the board. The board does rarely respond during this period, but you are welcome to come forward. If you can come to the podium, state your name, give your address. You'll have five minutes. I'll be keeping time, and if you begin to get close to your time and it doesn't seem you're wrapping up, I'll give you a little nudge to say your time's wrapping up. So, if you would like to come forward to the podium, state your name and give your address. Doesn't appear there's any comment this morning.
Great, very well. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
So, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director. Kelly?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm not used to coming up here this quickly in the morning.
Yeah.
We're moving right along. Let me get my staff report pulled up here so we can run through it quickly. As you noted, just some, an outline on what the department has been doing the past month. We have the primary meetings that we attended through the month of July with Planning Board. They did discuss two items. One was consideration of a text amendment submitted by Chris Greening from TW's Outdoor Outfitters proposing to amend the town code to reduce the required building separation from 20 to 10 when you have an accessory use abiding a principal use. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend denial of that text amendment. It's on your consent agenda today, and will go to public hearing in September. The Planning Board also continued their conversation on the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district. Planning Board, their next meeting is August 19, and that agenda is expected to include some conversation around some text amendments that have been prompted by recent general statutes regarding lot coverage calculations, how we view built-upon area, as well as reduction in parking dimensions going from 10 feet wide to nine feet wide, essentially. So, we'll be incorporating that into our code. Continue the conversation on the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district. I've spoken to that previously, but primarily focusing on opportunities to support and expand the existing buildings in that overlay district, refine the mix of allowable uses by removing some desirable, some undesirable C2 uses, which I know we can't do that right now, but when and if we can, and to implement strategies to preserve soundside views and access. There's also been some discussion about the boardwalk that we discussed several years back, and maybe re-initiating that conversation as well. There were no Board of Adjustment hearings in the month of July, but we do have one coming up in August. It's going to be for a house down in South Nags Head at 8525 South Old Oregon Inlet Road. The Septic Health Advisory Committee, they did meet at the end of July. We continued our conversation with the Division of Water Infrastructure Loan. That's the no-interest loan that we're going to have available here soon, hopefully. This committee worked out the methodology for determining high-risk properties, and staff presented to them a mechanism that we can hopefully use to pre-qualify our contractors to make sure they're compliant with the Davis Bacon Prevailing Wage Act, as well as the American Iron and Steel requirements. So, the committee was generally supportive of that. Felt like it was going to be acceptable to put in their scope to send to DWI. Our environmental planner, Connor Twitty, gave an update on where we're at with our numbers thus far. We have 110 pumping credits. 14 of those have been issued since we went, since we increased that credit from 150 to 250. We've had 10 loans processed, and at the time I wrote the report, 137 inspections. We're over 140 at this point. But I did want to also recognize that the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, actually made an effort to come up to the town of Nags Head and learn about our program because they're hoping to implement something similar there. So that was exciting. And also Connor Twitty and Dave Ryan, they've been requested to speak at the Water Quality for Fisheries Symposium in Beaufort, North Carolina later in October. So that's exciting for the town to be recognized like that. With regard to the Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, I won't dive into that. You're going to get a pretty detailed update on that from Joe Costello here in a little bit. Also, we'll be talking about the sand relocation and dune management as well. So, won't go too deep into that. Staff did submit the final application for the improvements for Hargrove Street for the Coastal Waterfront Access Grant, and we expect to hear back in late September on that. Our Dark Skies and Bright Stars Initiative, really can't say enough about that. It has really taken off. Planner Chris Tremblay has been doing a lot of really good work, a lot of really hard work. He's collaborated with Nest on an initiative for the oceanfront property owners, Lights Out for Sea Turtles. We've had some cleans made. There's a photo of that in your packet. So the idea there is going to be to connect with property management companies on the oceanfront, see about getting these cleans in those homes. There's some QR codes there that tells them what they need to be thinking about in terms of their lighting on the beach for sea turtles and hatchlings. We also have some little small green sea turtle stickers where our staff is more than happy to go into these oceanfront rental homes, identify the light switches that correlate to an outside light that may be affecting lighting on the beach, glare, sea turtles, et cetera. Put that little sticker on that light fixture. That way, if you're a visitor and you're coming here and you see a wall of light switches and you don't know which switch goes to what light, that'll tell you this switch, that's important, that goes to an outdoor light that could be affecting glare on the beach and sea turtles. So, before you go to bed, click this off. So that's really exciting. I think everybody's excited to learn about that and see how that progresses. Also, Chris has created a little diorama with a demonstration that he's brought to Doughty Park. He's out there with Connor talking about septic. Chris is talking about lighting. We have some photos of that in here, but he had a lot of engagement, teaching people about how shielding your lights and directing your light downward is really so much more helpful than unshielded and bright lights or uplighting, and how that can really affect our dark skies and what you can see and not see. So, I'm kind of geeking out on that, and I apologize, but it was really exciting to see everybody participating with that. Doughty Park Farmers Market, so July was their big month. Some things have started wrapping up. The Wagon Wednesdays have wrapped up. It was well-attended. There were mostly visitors, some locals, but we think we probably need to revisit the timing of that because it was a little hot at 10 o'clock, and so a lot of people didn't want to bring their pups out with it being that hot and humid. So maybe pulling that back to 8 or 9 o'clock in the morning would help. Kids move more. That's been going really well. Fitness has been just overwhelming attendance. That's gone great. Their summer concert series, more and more people are coming to that. We have four concerts in August. Those are listed up here, so we hope everybody will come out to that. And family fun times, that's been going really well. Riptide, the horse from Perala, seems to be what people love the most. So, that was really nice as well. And kids back to school, that's coming up on August 19. So, we just ask people to be aware of that and quickly show some photos of Chris Tremblay's diorama for Dark Skies, our clean for Lights Out for Sea Turtles. And then also want to acknowledge the good work that our part-time seasonal help in the Ortega has provided for our events coordinator, Paige Griffin. She's, I don't know, can't say enough good things about her. She heads back to school, but the time she's been here's been invaluable and a huge help to Paige. So, want to recognize her as well. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kelly this morning?
No questions.
Comments? I just want to say about the turtle exercise, you know, there were some headlines over the last month or so. There's a bucky somewhere in South Carolina that's disrupting turtle nesting because of their lighting. So it is a relevant topic. We appreciate Chris's passion for that. So Kelly, you're going to stay there and tell us about the sand relocation, dune management cost share.
I am. So, I think most everyone's familiar by now, but we do have the sand relocation program that helps oceanfront property owners to be able to remove sand from their structures, their homes, walkways, things of that nature. And this program, the dune management cost share, allows them to receive up to $3,500 every three years for the relocation of sand. They can also apply for $1,000 for dune stabilization, whether that's through fencing or planting of sea oats, bitter panicum, things like that. So, the program has been really successful. Let me pop down to this attachment. We have our numbers over the past couple of years. '22, '23, we had 266 sand relocation permits. '23, '24 was 280, and this past season, we had 200. I don't think this accounts for the exemptions that were provided for areas who needed sand relocation that were outside of the Nerrishma area. So, if you were Bonnet Street or north, you had to go through the KAMA exemption process. You couldn't use this authorization. So the numbers may be a little off, depending on whether the exemptions were included or not. But at any rate, I will acknowledge that I think I conveyed to you guys that in '23, it was our highest number of permits with the expectation of more applicants coming through in '26 on this three-year cycle. But it actually turns out, '23, '24 had the highest number of sand relocation permits. We do still believe that the 40,000 that was, or the 400,000 that was allocated is adequate and proper. We do think that we still need that in there, and would just ask that the board fund that 400,000 again for the '25, '26 sand relocation season. You have a chart in your packet, sort of a breakdown of the number of permits issued, the total amount of funding, what had been allocated, and what was actually dispersed. The difference between that is when someone shows interest in being part of the dune management cost share program, we review where they are in that three-year cycle and allocate either the 3,500 or the 1,000, depending on where they're at. But then it's incumbent on them, once the work is done, to provide the information, the invoices, et cetera, as to what the actual cost of the work was. So that's what we reimburse. So as you can see, this past year, we had allocated 210,000. We used about 186 of that because those were the people who got the required documentation back into us. And our deputy planning director, Joe Costello, put this map together for us to kind of visualize where our permits were pulled predominantly. So these green dots are the permits that were pulled in 2023. The pinkish-purpleish dots are from 2024, and the blue are from 2025. You can see from the graph at the bottom, obviously, 2024 was their highest number. But then here, you can see, based upon the numbers, you know, we have a lot of people taking advantage of the cost share program, but it's really half or less of the property owners out there who could potentially be taking advantage of it. So, with that, I think more education, more awareness, so that people know this is available to them and they can take advantage of that, is going to be, that'll be on us this upcoming sand season to make sure people are aware they have this. So with that, that's what I have. Just reiterate, I would request the 400,000 again for this season, if you're inclined to do that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to continue the program in putting 400,000 in it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing non? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do have a question. The Outer Banks beaches allocation not to exceed 15,000, have they drawn that in the past preceding years?
The past two years, they have not, but we're still including that as part of the 400,000. That'll still be available to them.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to an update on the Estrein Shoreline Management Plan. Joe?
Hello, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, we've had some recent progress on the Estrein Shoreline Management Plan. July was for at least Pilot Sites 1 and 2, which are the Nags Head Woods site, and then Pilot Site 2 is the Soundside Road site. We've gotten our schematic design, preliminary schematic designs from our consultant and the base of design report. We got that last week. July was mostly sort of data collection, modeling, putting all that together. We have a follow-up community stakeholder meeting tomorrow, which is mostly property owners, where we're going to show those designs and get input, feedback, see the reaction. And hopefully that will inform revisions. We're going to talk to the permit agencies just for a pre-application meeting and get their feedback, and so hopefully incorporate what the stakeholders and property owners think, as well as the regulatory agencies, in a revised design. And then the next steps would be to seek easements from property owners to construct, or if there is basically a lack of support to move forward, we can look at other options. But I want, and then the Pilot Site 3, the Harvey site, we've submitted a grant to fully fund construction, and that was awarded in July, and Amy put that together. So that one is fully funded, but that is owned by Nags Head and then the Dare County Tourism Board. So, there's less of a public process with that. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have two questions.
Yep.
So what would be the approximate timeline at this point for construction of the Harvey site?
Of the Harvey? Well, we haven't even, we've just gotten a finalized contract. I would think potentially next summer would be realistic.
Okay, all right. The other question is, where and when is the stakeholder meeting tomorrow?
The stakeholder meeting is taking place at 1:00 in this room. We originally had it in the conference room, but enough property owners wanted to come, which is a great thing. So it's at 1:00 in here. It's property owners who received a letter in the mail who are going to come and look at the designs and get their feedback. You know, we haven't had anything really substantial with all the data collection and modeling, so this is their first chance to really give their feedback. So, looking forward to hearing what people say. And then we're doing site visits where at 3:00, we're going to the Nags Head Woods site to look at that and have a site visit and talk with those property owners and look at the site. And then from 5:30 to 6:30, it will be just Soundside Road, property owners in this room again. Just because of the amount of owners, we couldn't really facilitate that out on-site as well.
Okay, that's good. My follow-up question was going to be, you know, what kind of participation are we expecting? And I'm really glad to hear that we had to upsize the room, and I just appreciate the overall level of engagement with those owners on this topic. Any questions for Joe?
Joe, when looking at the schematics yesterday, was all the data collected in the summer months?
The bathymetric stuff and then the survey data was collected in, like, spring, but the sub-aquatic vegetation can only be collected in late May to late June. So that was all collected during the May and June months.
All right, because I was speaking to Andy about it, and looking at the design of it, it looks like they're trying to protect from the west-southwest, whereas we get a lot of heavy, steady wind for days from the northwest-west.
Right.
And I just, you know, running models, you want to run models from both sides of that, make sure all the data's included.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I noticed on one of the tables, they kind of have, like, wind days, and like you said, they, you know, have the northwest pretty much equal to the other wind directions. I have to trust the coastal engineers as far as their design and to do what, you know, it's intended to do.
Yeah. And there was a lot of discussion about that at the meetings. I've been attending all of those, and they were looking at a lot of the northwest winds and stuff. Robert Nash was very concerned about that, and he thinks the northwest wind's a lot stronger than that southwest some of.
Yeah, they did. They did take that into consideration, and they have looked at that pretty extensively, so.
Thank you. Anything else to offer, because you have been in those meetings?
Just that the stakeholders did seem very excited about this project. There was very good participation the first time that we did it, and the fact that you said we had to upsize the room says that they are still very interested in everything that's going on. And I do believe, Joe, are we still looking for grant funding for the other two projects, or?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I was asking about the grant funding for the other two projects. Are we still looking for that?
Yeah, we've submitted for NIFWIF to go from 60% design to 100% design. We haven't applied for dollars for construction of Sites 1 and 2. So, that's where we are right now with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. We look for a report on the stakeholder session. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that brings us to new business and committee reports, and I will start to my left with Commissioner Lambert.
The Government Education Access Channel did meet. We actually met here at our boardroom two weeks ago, and we did, we were able to find a part-time employee that's overqualified, and we approved, and she'll be starting shortly, so she'll be a huge help to Chad, and that's it.
Okay. Really appreciate their work on the life-saving video. That was amazing.
I was going to say that in my commissioner comments, but I'll go ahead and say, I just want to say thank you to Roberta. The life-saving, we had a full house. There was people standing in the back, and it went awesome. So, thank you so much for your help in that, Roberta.
Yep, very nicely done. Mr. Sears?
Housing Task Force has, is in the process of hiring Ms. Wumble's firm and to do some 501 work and then look at some land acquisition through government, so it's no cost, so that we can bring the cost of construction into the table only. And then we've identified seven sites that all that'll take place on. So hopefully by the end of the year, I won't put, she's not here, so I won't put her, actually, she is here, so I won't put her on the spot and promise any deadline dates, but I think you'll see another good report this year on that. On the Tourism Board, we meet Tuesday to discuss whether we approve the boardwalk or not for the Tourism Board site. So, we'll have that number for you next time.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Well, Joe, just gave a big update on the Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, but I am looking forward to that meeting tomorrow and just to see how everything goes. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We did have a Jeanette's Peer Advisory Group meeting. I don't know if Andy wants to say anything about that, but we do have a written report following up from that meeting that we could share with the board. So that brings us to consideration of resolutions authorizing fishing tournaments. We have Nags Head's Fishing Club, the Fraternal Order of Eagles, the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, and the Bodacious Babes. I think we've probably done all of these before. I think we could probably do these in one these before, I think we could probably do these in one motion if we want to authorize all of these, getting odds that would be.
Just one question real quick, any problem with the beach that we are concerned with unless this, we have a storm during that time, that we shouldn't move forward with this?
We, Chief, Chief Hale and I talked about our beach driving season yesterday or the day before, we were looking at our beach driving map, last year we had an area closed in the southern portion of the town, I believe from Helican South, that area has recovered a little bit, and so we're not recommending closing that section. We are still recommending keeping the section north of Nags Head Pier closed, the beach is in a little bit better shape than it was last season, there's a couple of other reasons why we recommend keeping that section closed, one would be, provides an area of the beach for the public to use that's not occupied with vehicles, and that tends to be a nice thing, we see a lot of beach traffic during the beach driving season with regular beachgoers, the weather tends to be so nice in October, you just get a lot of conflicts. And we've done it the past few years, and it's worked pretty well, it also helps with traffic that might be coming down from Kittleby Hills that does not have a permit from the Town of Nags Head. And so it's really effective from a management standpoint to do that, but to your question, the beach is in pretty good shape right now, overall, so right now we're not seeing problems, we've had a little bit of high surf the last few days, after things subside, we might want to go check it out and see what it looks like, but, you know, when Kelly was showing the data from the sand relocation permits, we had a fewer number of permits this off-season, and I think that's attributed to, we had a calm winter this year, and I think that's why the beach is wider this season, because we had a lot of, a lot of the sand is actually up on the beach right now, so, I know the surfers are feeling it, and there's not many sandbars except for the north side of Jeanette's Pier, but maybe that'll change.
If there's, if there's no issues with the town, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, thank you, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, and a second to approve all of those fishing tournaments, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I appreciate the town's approach to that, keeping that area of the beach open for visitors and having that break between the towns, I think that's a really, really good solution, I see Chief nodding his head, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a good one. Speaking of chief, we have consideration of an amendment to the traffic control map, Chief Hale?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here before you today making a request to amend the town's traffic control map to extend the no parking between signs tollway zone on the east side of South Wrightsville to the intersection of East Driftwood Street. The area is currently listed as no parking in this manner from East Ariot Street to the edge of the property of 2229. In the recent months, we've had numerous cars start parking in this area due to a local business there, I will say that the business has met with me, I've met with them, trying to seek solutions, but the request has come from some property owners there where some damage has been done to some signs and other issues over there, and it would just be on the east side only. I've already spoken to the business there, let them know that this would be coming before the board as a request for approval, they are seeking alternative interest to purchase property for parking, so it's not like that the business is going against anything that the town is doing, they are seeking for alternative areas to do, and it's a very successful business up there right now.
Yep.
So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are the, and we may or may not have heard from them, are the property owners on the east side in this area, are they aware that we will be doing this?
Yes, I have, I was emailed several times, property owners have contacted our shift officers, seeking ways to handle it, they were told to be put in contact with me, they emailed me, I emailed them that a request would be going before, it happened after the July board meeting, so they are aware that it would be coming up at the August meeting today, and then I would make contact if it passes or does not pass, and let them know where the town is moving on this.
Okay, alright, very good. It's nice to have successful businesses, but, you know, this is, I believe, at least the, at least the no parking areas north of this are very consistent with what we've done for other similar businesses in the town, and I think what we did there was squeeze these folks a little further south, and they're still parking on the shore.
Yes.
But you can't have property damage, I mean, that's the, that's the key thing.
I think some of the parking on this particular sites being utilized by the northern sites as well, so their overflow parking is causing problems.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I mean, I make a motion to approve the change to the no parking signs, this traffic control, I make a motion to consider the amendment to the traffic control map.
Okay.
It's always on Wrightsville Avenue.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you, Chief, appreciate that. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney, Ms. Wamboldt, do we have anything today?
I don't have anything, my understanding is there was nothing referred to John for this meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. Items referred to and presentations from the town manager, and we're going to get a financial update from Amy this morning.
Somebody was taller than me. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, I did just check the latest information, I wrote that memo, that's in the packet on Friday, just to try to capture everything, and I just checked a minute ago, and we haven't received any updated numbers as far as occupancy, so the memo will probably stand as it is right now with the information I have. Before I begin, I did want to note, not related to this update, but we do have the fiscal year '25, '26 adopted budget, adopted CIP, and the two-page budget and brief on our website, if anyone is interested in looking at that. So, let me pull up my memo. Okay, so we really wanted, during the budget process, we had sort of discussed the sales, occupancy, land transfer taxes, how we were just kind of proceeding cautiously with perhaps there being a budget shortfall. Again, we have not received the big, one of the biggest months, which is June, for occupancy and sales, we should be getting that this month, but as it stands now, we project that we're going to be about three, $430,000 under budget with sales, occupancy, and land transfer taxes. Now, this is going to be self-correcting, and I'll explain that and how in a minute. We did see land transfer tax above what we budgeted, about $58,000 over budget, which was 15% higher than last year. Now, making up for that shortfall, utility sales tax, I think we're going to be at least $200,000 over budget, which is close, crazy, over, close to almost a million dollars for that, this is close to 100,000 more than last year, so that continues to, to help. And of course, you know, our badge of honor, our high tax collection rate, we collected about 65,000 over budget, and that again is because of the high tax collection rate. We did receive some unanticipated revenue from the tower rent, close to $50,000, they said that they owed us back rent through '25. And again, we had discussed during the budget process about the fund balance appropriation, we reduced that, so that's going to add about 350,000 back to our unassigned fund balance. We did mention interest income regarding, recording our investments, we have to record them at fair market value, so over all the funds, not just the general fund, the fair market value gain is going to be about a million dollars, last year it was closer to 700,000, and we don't budget for that, although it does have a financial impact, so it is kind of an ebb and flow. And as far as just regular interest income, taking out the fair market value gain in the general fund, we're about $100,000 over our budget projection. And we are going to also see some tipping from, savings from tipping fees, even though the tipping fee tonnage continues to be higher, and the fuel surcharge, we are $80,000 under budget, so that was about $800,000 in tipping fees, and that includes the tipping fees and the CND fees that we take to the landfill, and this is about exactly the same as '24, even though the prices were higher per ton. And so this fiscal year, we were able to reflect that in '26, because we only budgeted $830,000 in tipping fees, so that is in line with that pattern, and again, the tipping fee and the CND fee tonnage has increased this fiscal year. As far as water, I do think we're going to be slightly under budget, we haven't done the accrual yet, so I, again, it's very, it will likely change. Our wholesale water rate did decrease from 2.202 to 2.109 per thousand gallons, and even though we do, we do a true-up in December for the year, and we owe them, because they don't change the rate until December, so we owe them about $50,000, and even when we did that reconciliation, we still paid them 25,000 less than we did the prior fiscal year. So I think when you look at the revenues and the amount of water purchases, purchased, the smart meters are working because they're detecting leaks and proactively conserving water, so I think that's fantastic, and we thank the board for that. So, again, I think that some of the issues we brought up during the budget process are going to be self-correcting, and again, because we do have some of these larger numbers coming in, we don't know our exact fund balance yet, we're still working on our audit, getting all that together, but I do feel confident that if we don't go above our maximum, which is 35%, then we will be very, very close to that, and we appreciate your confidence and time and support, and we're happy to answer any questions, so thank you.
Good, thank you, any questions for Amy this morning?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I am, the happiest thing I'm about, I see in there, is that our tax collection rate has remained high despite the change of personnel, so somebody's doing a good job.
Yes, we appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, alright, very good, thank you.
Just real quick too, Amy mentioned, the last couple of years, we've been doing a budget and brief document, which is on our website, and I just wanted to share that with you real quick on the screen, and so I think we'll continue to do this, this is just a way to give the public a real quick snapshot of our budget without having to dive into the whole document, Amy's been doing this, it's, she does a good job with it and other staff, so we appreciate that, and, and then beyond the, the update, as Amy mentioned during the budget process last year, and coming into this year, we were a little bit concerned about changing trends.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think for the course of the coming year, at least quarterly, will provide the board a fairly in-depth overview of where we stand in order to make any adjustments we need to, whether we're under or over what we projected, so.
I think that would be much appreciated, just stay on, on top of that, and I know there will be significant news at the, at the next report, because the summer, the summer revenues will have been reported by then, so, thank you, thank you, Amy, thank you, Andy. That brings us to the Ocean Rescue Housing update, and Andy and David.
We just wanted to give the board a real brief update on the Ocean Rescue Housing, essentially because it's about done, you know, it's not, I think, 100% done, but, but pretty close, and so we just wanted to show it off and let the board and the public see it, so, that's really.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, as Andy said, we're really getting close to the finish line for this project, and I thought that I'd share some recent photos to show you how far we've progressed. The photo up here on the screen, this is taken from the rear of the building, kind of the eastern exposure, you can see that the landscaping, or a portion of the landscaping has gone in, and some of the finished exterior work. This is taken from the north side of the building, and you can see this is the entrance way to the second floor, as well as the bottom floor, all the pavers are in, the side of the building is painted, and as I said, getting very close to going ahead and, and finishing off in and around the structure. You can see that cabinets have been installed in the kitchen, as well as the sink and countertops, we expect the appliances to be delivered the first to next week, there's some minor finishing work to be done with electrical trim out, HVAC trim out, and plumbing trim out, but you can see that we've, we're very far along in the process right now, this is one of the restrooms, the tiling is in the process of being installed, and this is another, a similar bathroom up on the second story, and again, this is a very similar layout between the first floor and second floor with the kitchen and overall living area. More pictures of the restrooms, and here it is, the front of the building right here, so. The contract substantial completion date is August 28th, and in speaking with the contractor, we'll be looking to go for the CEO maybe within the next two weeks, so in advance of that date, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule and on track. Aside from the construction, I think that there's still some furnishings that have to be purchased, and the town's going to go ahead and take care of that, but yes, some very good progress and an exciting project to go ahead and finish off.
Okay, great, any questions for David?
No, let's get tested.
Nope, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and that brings us finally to discussion of park use policies and crowd gathering permits, Andy?
Okay, just real briefly, this is something that we're going to request to work on over the next few months, it's something that we've been discussing internally. Chapter four of our town code deals with crowd gathering permits and, and public gatherings and some other things, this chapter of our code hasn't been updated in a long time, and so from that perspective, we do need to take a look at it and probably research and recommend things to the board that, that bring it up to current practice, but also, we've, we've had some issues with some of the crowd gathering permits and some of the events that we've permitted over the last few years, and we want to take a look at our ordinance in light of those events to try to see how we can tighten things up. We're also going to be looking at our park use policies, we have a lot of events at Doughty Park during the summertime, and we're pretty maxed out with, with our resources, and we've had a lot of groups request to have events at Doughty Park also during the summertime, and in some cases, those events don't really have much presence from the town, and so we need to think about how we're managing those events, in some cases, we've had some complaints or issues, and it's most likely we need to have a presence there when we have a large event at, at Doughty Park, and also, we have some large events in the town that have a pretty significant impact on the public and our resources, whether it be police or, or public services, and right now, we're only collecting a crowd gathering permit fee of $125 for some of these events, even though our resources are being taxed much more significantly than that. So part of this may also involve looking at our fee schedule when it comes to approving certain events, especially in cases where we need to provide our own resources to support a private event, and so it's really, really a hodgepodge of a lot of different things that we're going to be looking at, but primarily updating our crowd gathering permits ordinance, looking at our internal process for issuing permits and reviewing them, and looking at the staff resources we, we need to provide for, for events that are, are large events, and then also our park use policies. So our goal, if the board is okay with all of this, is to do all this by the end of the calendar year, so that come first of the year, we can provide any new procedures to applicants that may, may be wanting to have events during 2026, and so that's what we're, we're looking at doing, and happy to answer any questions, we'll probably be providing the board with an update on our progress in a few months, but I just wanted to give the board a heads up that we are asking to start working on this.
A couple of questions, one is, one of those sites is the event site, will, will Visitors Bureau be involved in some of those conversations as we talk about, or at least be alerted to potential management changes if we, if we? or at least be alerted to potential management changes if we, if we expect some for events there? Or related to events that happen there?
I think they need to be, you know. They, we, we have more crowd gathering permit event meetings with them than any other group. And so if, if we're looking at changing things, they need, we need to get their input on that.
Sure.
But I think they also need to be aware that some of the events they're approving at the event site have a pretty significant impact on the town. Although we're, we're happy to receive the, the benefits of these events, we also have to manage the events in, in a proper way, so.
The other question is, and this is, this is off-topic. I'll go ahead and ask it before I open this up to the board. A little bit of an update on Whalebone Park and where we stand on wrapping that up.
Well, Nancy's been working hard on that, and I, I think it's, it's nearing completion. There's one item that I think we're, we're waiting on that, that may take a little bit more time. But would you like to say some things about that?
Just the, we got to put a seal in and a cap on it. The plumber needs to finish up. And then we're waiting on the floodproofing doors.
Okay, oh, that's right. Still waiting, who knows?
Pretty close.
Okay.
So did they, they finish the flooring, the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks great. Some nice-looking facility, so.
What are picnic tables for the shelter? I think we already have those. And so we're just, the floodproofing is the last piece of this and we had to have those parts custom manufactured, so there's some lead time on that, but.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions about the?
I do have a question about the permits. When people pull permits for crowd gathering, how far in advance can they pull those?
I don't think there's any limit on how, how far in advance. I mean, there wouldn't be any restriction on someone applying now for a permit next year.
Have anything, has anything been applied for, for next year?
I think we, we've had some inquiries, but I'm not sure anybody's actually submitted an application.
We just request that they have their full package together so that it is submitted as a complete package. So sometimes that limits how early they can apply for, like their insurance and stuff. They don't have all the pieces together. But there is no specific rule as to how far in advance, just we request at least three weeks.
If we change anything, not that we would, but if we do change anything, anyone that does apply now would still be subject to those changes?
Well, I, I think if they applied now and we issued the permit, then whatever conditions are in their permit is what, what would apply.
Okay.
If, if we had anything significant that would affect their permit that changed, we could always go to them and ask them for the information.
Okay.
So hopefully it wouldn't be that big of an issue.
Okay, that's what I'm just wondering, so we're not tied to something?
Yeah. You know, one of the events that has a huge impact on the town, that the town's been very supportive of for a long time, is the parade, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And it's kind of a unique event because it's, it's really not a town event. But the town provides a lot of resources for that event. And you know, there, parades are becoming a big topic around the country. You know, you've got communities that, that have had parades that have had a lot, a lot of things go wrong. And so I think that one of the aspects of what we might do is, is really try to tighten up the management of the parade. And then I know Manio's looking hard at this right now with, with their rules for parades. And you know, everybody's probably aware of the city of Raleigh had a big issue with the Christmas parade. And so it's an area of concern for staff. And so it's, it's something that we feel like we need to take a hard look at.
Thank you. Other questions for Andy?
Andy, if you're going to start this January 1, when do you want this in? Basically to go to the public in November instead of late December? I mean, you're talking year end, you're talking four months.
Well, our goal would be to have everything completed by January 1 so that we're ready to communicate to the applicants what they need to do. So it's likely that ordinance would be approved by the board in December or even November in order to make that happen.
Okay.
So yeah, our goal was to basically have, if there's a new packet, here you go. Here's what you need to do to apply for a permit. Here's what the ordinance says, and all that's done so that on January 1, we're ready to go.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to see the packet come out January 1.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
A little more advanced notice for those.
Yeah, I'd say if we could, if we could hit that in November, that would be, in terms of having it approved by the board, I think that would be, be beneficial. That way, everybody's on, on notice.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Bob?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. That brings us to our Board of Commissioners' agenda. I'll start with Commissioner Sanders.
Um, I don't really have anything, but I just did want to say that I'm, I'm pretty amazed at all the good stuff that's happening here in the town today. Just from Chris's dark sky stuff to our programs being models for other towns to the staff housing we're looking to provide and, and all the good stuff at Doughty Park. I see that just increasing, crowds getting bigger and bigger. And I just want to recognize staff and say thank you for all the good things that are going on for our citizens and for our visitors here.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Sears?
Yeah, well, just to add on to what Bob said. I mean, Kelly mentions eight different events that go on at, at Doughty's Park. I think that's growing and maybe we need to look at that from that growing standpoint till maybe we need to develop a whole division for just the parks. I mean, as many parks and as many activities as we have. But we do a lot of work with a limited amount of funds and people. And I think it's a, a light to be shined on our staff for being so accomplished. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Lam?
I agree with Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Sears. And also, I just want to say thank you to everyone for a safe July 4 celebration, especially to our public service, emergency services. Everything went off wonderfully, so thank you so much.
Okay. You know, I, I would echo all of that. I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to attending the concert at Doughty Park tonight. The park looks great. Nancy, I want to say the town looks great. Please take back to your staff, you know. I get, when I, when I sit down with the other mayors, I get compliments about the way the town of Nags Head looks and, and the, the things that we do. And so I really, really appreciate everything that, that everybody's doing. We have a great culture right now. I do not have anything additional on my agenda. We do not have a closed session. Is there other business to come before the board?
I actually forgot to mention one thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And maybe Roberta can help. She, she reminded me that we've got National Water Quality Month is, is August. And so we are actually doing something to celebrate National Water Quality Month. Roberta's been working hard on some videos to talk about the importance of protecting our local water resources and highlighting our septic health program, our stormwater programs. And so I think she wanted to share with you one of the reels, just real quick.
Okay, please.
We're, we're, we have six of these, I think we're going to be putting out over the course of this month, so. And this was also part of our strategic plan, and so I think we wanted to note that as well.
Yep, very good.
I'll just be quick since we're at the end of the meeting here. Thank you for, for what you do to protect this incredible community that we, a lot of us are fortunate to call home. During the strategic planning meeting, as Andy mentioned, we talked about threats to water quality because our water quality is so incredibly important here. We talk about the lack of surf. Well, we wouldn't be surfing in the water and complaining about that if we couldn't get in the water. And so we've developed six reels from this, from your request during the strategic planning meeting that, that talk about the importance of the water here. This first reel, which we're going to show, discusses how all water is related. David Ryan introduced us to the One Water concept. And then the other reels will, one focuses on our septic health initiative. One focuses on what you can do, what everyone here in Nags Head can do, actually outside of Nags Head, everyone, to protect the water. So I just wanted to show you the first one that we released yesterday. Hey, Katie.
In Nags Head, water surrounds us, sustains us, and connects us. One Water is the idea that all water is connected, whether it's in the ground, in our taps, or in the sea. Every drop of water flows in a connected cycle. When we take care of water on land, we are also protecting the water that surrounds us. Join us in protecting Nags Head's water because all water is one water.
Nicely done. That's really very nice.
Thank you, and they're, thank you, and thank, really, honestly, thank you. Been here a long time and I appreciate all that you do to protect the community in which I live. And they're reels so that they will address a, a different audience. And you know, quick, they're quick, so thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, great. We are adjourned.